Here we go. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Green Local School District Board of Education meeting for November. Mrs. Snowberger, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mrs. Stoinoff.
Here.
Mrs. Finelli.
Here.
Mr. Cohen.
Here.
Mr. Tanaki.
Here.
Would you all please rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You okay?
Yeah. I was making sure you were okay.
Oh.
Thank you. We'll go right into the honors and recognition. Mr. Miller.
All right. Mr. Schenk is handing off the duties for our primary school this evening to Mr. Booth. So, Mr. Booth, can you please come forward and start us off? I believe we have two students of the month this evening to recognize.
Yes, Mr. Schenk gives his well wishes. He has a stomach flu at home, so he asked me to come in and represent the Green Primary School, so it's a pleasure for me to be here. I would like to recommend two students. We have one that is the October student of the month and one that's the November student of the month, so let's go with the October 1st. Lumina, you want to come up and join me? Remember, I come from the place of monster hugs and high fives, so this is really great. She is here with her parents, and it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight to celebrate with her parents. Evan, Evren, Copter, and Denise is here, Copter, who is also her parents, and Lumina Copter is her name. I don't know if I said your last name, Lumina. And some things about her, she loves to play games, she loves to dance, and she loves to sing, and her favorite game and sport is taekwondo. So, of course, you know, I have to ask, show me your taekwondo move. Yeah, so she showed me that today. It's a little dangerous, so we worked through it, but taekwondo is what she's into. Her favorite color is pink and white. Her favorite food, interesting, corn pizza with cheese. And also, her favorite thing about school is the new games that Mrs. Campbell has. So, that's great. Mrs. Campbell's here tonight. Thank you for joining us. She says, "I am special because I'm a bright light," and I, actually, her parents says, "I'm a bright light and speak two languages." She not only can speak English, but you can speak, what was it? Turkish as well, so she's very well-versed in both. And then I asked her, of course, what do you want to be when you grow up, and you said?
A farmer.
She wants to be a farmer. Isn't that awesome? So, and so we look forward to seeing what she does in her future, and this is what her teacher said about her. And Mrs., she says, "I am so proud to have Lumina Copter in my class and was honored to recommend her as Green Primary October Student of the Month. Lumina is such a bright light in our classroom. Lumina is always smiling, happy, friendly, and caring towards others. Lumina is serious about her studies and is constantly on task. Lumina loves playing pretend, building with blocks, and swinging on the swings in the sunshine. I cannot wait to see all that she accomplishes this year." And that's from Mrs. Campbell, her teacher. So, please help me in congratulating Lumina as our student of the month for October. And our next student of the month, there she is. Come on up. Do you want to come on up? There's Aurora Becter, everyone. Aurora's here. Aurora, turn around and face the crowd. Aurora, I get to see every day, as she's a preschooler and gets, comes in from the car, and I get to see her every day and give her the high five, and she really is a bundle of joy. Here she is, Aurora Becter. She's here tonight, Mom, Dad, Nana, is her family, Grandpa, Mimi, and tons of cousins, is what I hear. Okay, Mrs. Mayone's here, too. Thank you. And let's recognize Mrs. Mayone. Isn't that sweet that she came, huh? Super nice, yes. So, Mrs. Mayone is here. She also loves, her favorite things include going to the zoo and playing with Dad. Her favorite color is pink, and her favorite food, get this, string cheese. String cheese is her favorite food. Her favorite game is soccer and Bluey on the iPad. She said, "The favorite thing about school is Mrs. Mayone," is her favorite thing, and also playing with her friends. She's special because she says, "I love my family." And then, "When I grow up, I want to be a mail person," she said. She wants to be working for FedEx like her dad and be a mail person. And Mrs. Mayone wrote some very nice things that I'd like to read, too. Mrs. Mayone says, "I think Aurora Becter," we're talking about you, Aurora Becter, "would make a good student of the month. Aurora has embodied, is the embodiment of happiness and joy. She brings such positive energy into our classroom each day as she comes in with a smile and an enthusiastic greeting. Any task she is given in the classroom, she attempts with the same energy and enthusiasm. She loves to be with her friends," which is pretty much anyone she comes into contact with. "Her giggle is infectious, and she has a genuine excitement about even the small moments of the day. She reminds us of how important it is to find joy in everyday routines and the power of sharing a smile with everyone you meet." So, please help me in congratulating her as our student of the month.
All right, next up, we have Green Elementary, Mrs. Seals, and I believe we have both students with us this evening? Nope, just one. Okay. Spoke too soon.
All right. We are missing our ones due in the month, Penelope Stunkus, but I did want to mention her name. But we do have here Lincoln Smith. He is one of our November Student of the Month for Green Elementary School, and I had the pleasure of spending some time with Lincoln today. He told me that his hopes, dreams, and goals are to play in the major leagues one day. He really enjoys baseball, specifically pitching, and he would like to play for specifically the Guardians. When I was chatting with him, I noticed that he shared his batting average is .75, so eight out of 10 times he's hitting the ball, and he, I told him, I said, "Well, we got to tell somebody this." So, we got on the phone, and I said, "How about we call the GM of the Angels?" And he kind of looked at me with a crazy face, and we called up my cousin and shared that I think that the Angels could use Lincoln on their team. So, he told him to keep up the great work, and he will be watching him for the future. His favorite subjects in school are science because he enjoys learning about the solar system. He loves the new building because this year he actually gets to be in the same building as his brother Gavin, who is in second grade, and that will not happen again until they are in high school as a freshman and senior. He enjoys, as you know, baseball, but he also is playing youth basketball for the Green Bulldogs and football. His best advice that he's ever been given is from his parents. His parents tell him that he always needs to try his hardest in everything that he does. His teachers had this to say, "Lincoln is a responsible student who's becoming quite the leader in class. He is helpful to his peers, very self-aware, and he ignores all distractions, even when they come from close friends. He is locked in during class and Bulldog Strong. He is engaged in lessons, participates always, is kind to everyone, and isn't afraid to make mistakes. He is responsible, dependable, and an all-around star student. Lincoln is very quiet but extremely respectful and focused on his academics. He shows great perseverance. We are very proud to have Lincoln as our Bulldog Strong Student of the Month for Green Elementary." So, join me in congratulating Lincoln, future MLB player.
Now, we have Green Middle School, Mr. Elliott.
Good evening. The November Student of the Month for the middle school is a sixth-grade student, Emily Herring. Here's what her teachers had to say. "We have chosen Emily Herring because she is a hard worker, volunteers in class, and is willing to help others. She always has a smile on her face and does all her work with pride and effort." This is what Emily had to share about herself. She lives with her mom, Christie, and Dad, Bill, her third-grade sister, Kaitlyn, and Dotson, Frank. She enjoys spending time with her family and playing with her sister. She likes baking, the outdoors, and helping out friends. Emily is involved with the GMS Choir and also plays tennis through Green Tennis Club. Emily said that her favorite part of being at the middle school is all the opportunities with clubs and extracurriculars. Her favorite subject is math and has been for a long time. Emily said she believes she was chosen because she pays attention in class and helps other students when they don't understand a problem. When asked if she had any advice for other students, Emily said to help people, be nice, and be grateful for what you have. I think that is great advice. Emily said that her grandma is one of her biggest heroes or role models because she volunteers at nursing homes, is always there if someone needs something, and takes care of Emily's great-grandparents. She definitely sounds like someone to look up to, and Emily is doing a nice job of following in her footsteps. Please help me congratulate Emily Herring by giving her a big round of applause.
And finally, Green High School, Mrs. Brown.
It's my pleasure to introduce our two seniors of the month. Ethan Phillips, here is the son of Brooke and Brett. In school, he is our president of the student council and the class of 2026. He's also president of Bulldog Ambassadors, vice president of band, they're getting ready for their big trip here, first chair at Tuba in the Winda Ensemble, and a member of National Honor Society and German Club. He also plays in both our jazz and pep bands, as well as in a trumpet choir. Outside of school, Ethan enjoys volunteering at his church with their student ministry program, spending time with friends and family, and kayaking. In the fall of 20, excuse me, 2026, Ethan plans on furthering his education at college where he intends to major in political science and history. So, congratulations to Ethan Phillips. Our second senior of the month is Rowan Pennington, and she is the daughter of Jared and Nicole. She is a dedicated student whose involvement in leadership, much like Ethan's, shines both in and out of the classroom. Throughout her high school career, she's been active member of our cheer program, participating on both the basketball and football sideline teams, as well as our high school competition team. One of her greatest accomplishments, or proudest accomplishments, was winning first place at UCA Nationals last year in Orlando, Florida. And in addition to her success in cheerleading, she also plays a vital role in our student journalism program as the editor-in-chief of our Paw Print, which is our high school newsletter, and you can get that online as well as in print if you stop in at the high school. Her commitment to the excellence in storytelling reflects her passion for both teamwork and communication. Outside of school, she enjoys spending time with her friends and family, works after school at a local retirement home, where she demonstrates compassion and responsibility beyond her years. After graduation, she plans to continue to attend college to study medicine, continuing her dedication to learning and helping others. So, congratulations, Rowan.
Another just awesome group of students of the month, so let's give them one more round of applause for everybody. All right, now we're going to segue to our spotlight on staff sponsored by the Green Schools Foundation. So, this is where we have different people that write in or email or share positives about various staff members, and then we make a selection, three each, each time throughout the year, and tonight we have three great ones. Can I please have Lindsay, Heather, and Michelle come forward? All right, who wants to give the speech first? All right, so I'm going to start with, I'll start with Lindsay. So, Lindsay is one of the first people that anyone who, and she's in the middle, by the way. Lindsay is one of the first people that anybody who visits the middle school will see, and she's just such a great representation for the school. She's friendly, knowledgeable, and makes the main office run, and knowing Mr. Elliott, she needs all the help she can get. She builds positive relationships with so many different people, from staff, subs, parents, you name it, and nobody has anything bad to say. Everything has been positive. Lindsay is in charge of so many different things. She made a major move leaving from the intermediate school to the middle school due to the reconfiguration of the buildings. There were a lot of challenges with that that go behind the scene, would give most people anxiety, yet she took it with a brave face and had a calm presence the whole time. One of the things that everyone says is she takes on every single challenge with a positive attitude, strong work ethic, and tremendous flexibility. She's also done all of it with a smile, absolutely no complaints. Your dedication, professionalism, and calming presence has been essential to an excellent start to the new school here at GMS, and the middle school in the district couldn't be more happy to have you. Thank you for all that you do. Congratulations. All right, Heather, who is on my right. Heather Brainenberg is a dedicated paraprofessional who has held many different roles throughout her career in Green Local Schools. Currently, she supports students' academic needs across four different grade levels, which is no easy task. She collaborates with district coaches to implement effective strategies that enhance student learning. The children appreciate Heather for her calm and quiet demeanor, which makes them feel safe when they're around her. She's always ready to assist in each and every situation. She makes so many tremendous contributions at the school, and the elementary and the district are ecstatic to have her working for Green Local Schools. Thank you. Congratulations. And last but not least, on my left is Michelle Valentine, who is a paraprofessional at the elementary as well. She's patient, kind, and caring towards her students and colleagues. She takes on a variety of roles each and every day, and there's a common theme here, always ready to help in any situation, which is huge. Whenever she is seen, she's always actively engaged with students, assisting them in learning, math, and reading skills, which at that age are just so important, building blocks. She's collaborated with the district coaches as well to learn effective curriculum strategies that work with young learners, and she does all this with a smile and a positive attitude. Elementary and the district are just so proud to have her on our team, so thank you and congratulations. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right, how about one more round of applause for the staff and the students of the month? Thank you. Awesome stuff. We move into the more formal part of the meeting. If those of you who have, I don't want to say better things to do, but other things to do, I know there's a lot of commitments out there. Please, you won't offend us, but we'll give you a few minutes to collect your things and head out the back.
Or you can stay if you really want to. Yeah, nobody ever stays. You know, Madison loves corn on pizza as well.
This is not right.
Really? Where's it gonna be?
Girls got good taste.
Is that place even open? No. Did you ever go in there? No, me neither. Yeah. Really? That looks terrifying. Is that what we have?
Yeah.
Well, that's cool. They have to stay the whole time?
Yep.
Usually just one time. Oh, that's.
Same. They're watching Democracy in Action?
Yes.
It's our most local. Hey, Ed, it's best form. Local form.
Should be home taking a shower and going to bed.
In fact, we should have all the government students introduce themselves.
Maybe we should, next time. All right, moving right along, we'll move on to the agenda approval for this evening. We don't have any addendum items for the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve it as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
And Mr. Tanaki. Mrs. Snowberger.
Mrs. Stoinoff.
Yes.
Mr. Tanaki.
Yes.
Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
It's five to zero.
Thank you. If anyone would like to speak on behalf of the agenda we approved just now, any of the subject matter, feel free to do so. Otherwise, we'll have an open comment period towards the end. Seeing none, we're going to move right along from that. We have no need for executive session for this evening, and we'll move on to the superintendent treasurer report. All right. So, I just wanted to take a moment. Those of you who are probably familiar have heard of Blessings in a Backpack and Blessings, and if you're familiar with that, great. Jen Dewar does an amazing job. One of the things that I find to be most inspiring with Jen in terms of blessings is the dedication and effort, obvious, but the anonymity that, from the day I first talked to her about the program, that she strives for. So, constantly, you can see her wheels turning with her team, trying to figure out how to do things better, how to improve. Recently, I watched a video, and I thought, hmm, I didn't know some of these things, and it's really important to get the message out because we have a lot of families and students that are in need, and certainly, if the resource is there, we want to make it as easy as humanly possible. So, that's enough of me talking. I'm going to ask Jen to come forward, and I think she's going to start off with the video. That was quick.
Well, let's see. Can you hear me? No? Okay, thanks, Mom. Okay. Let's do it this way, baby.
You're on there. You're on.
Okay. All right. So, before we get started, now it's working, I would like to acknowledge Juliana. She's here tonight. Go ahead, stand up, Juliana. She's one of our alumni, and her and Seth worked tirelessly to ensure that this video turned out well. I can't tell you how many hours they put into this brainstorming, and really, they are the ones who directed it and determined the direction that they thought the kids would best receive it. So, thank you so much for your dedication to the program and our community, Juliana.
Hey, where'd you get that snack?
What snack? This? Oh, well, this is actually from Blessings in a Backpack, which is actually what I'm here to talk to you about today. I'm Seth McMillan.
And I'm Juliana Chiguri Alouisi, and we're both Green High School alumni. Come along with us as we show you how to pick up a bag from the library.
Goodwill.
At the fire station.
Here we are at the library. Now, the process is the same at each location, but we're going to show you exactly how it works here. Come on along. It's very quiet. It's very. Now, we made it to the fire station. The fire station's open 24/7, so it'll be a good option to come for late nights or for the weekends.
Thank you for watching. We hope you'll take advantage of all of these awesome resources within the City of Green.
And as you just now see in the video, the program is now started up, so go in whenever you need to and get your bag. See you guys later.
Bye.
That was excellent. And this is very important for everyone to know, not just our school board members, but our community and especially our students. Right now, in Green, we have about 1,000 children who are living at or below the poverty level, 1,000. To be considered at or below the poverty level in Green, a family of four has to make under $31,500. That's before they pay their taxes. That's a household income. We know that anyone who is living in poverty or below poverty, any child, that is considered a food insecure home. We've been running Blessings in a Backpack now for 14 years, but here's the thing about us. Everyone wants to talk about how successful we are, but out of the 1,000 kids that are living in homes that are food insecure, we're servicing under 200 kids. We know we're failing in some way when we're not servicing that many children. So, what we're doing, and we're doing this nationwide right now, we are the guinea pig for all Blessings in a Backpack programs nationwide. They're watching what we're doing. We did surveys last year. We went into the school and we talked to students. We said, you know, what would make a difference with picking up your bags? We know one of the major problems is discretion. They do not want to be identified as a Blessings student, as a Blessings kid. So, we came up with the idea of distribution centers. These centers will give children a chance to show up at any point, get a bag, and not have to receive that food while they are at school. We are hoping that this is going to make a difference. I will tell you, it's been a slow start, so we're hoping to get this word out more, and I can assure you that if this does not take off and if it is not successful, we will continue to work diligently and as hard as we can to ensure that every student in Green gets what they need as far as food goes, regardless if it's in a school, in a distribution center, or through another idea that comes about through a volunteer or community member. This is our passion. We know that you are passionate about it, too. All of us will work together to ensure that every student has what they need to fully grow and succeed at what they're doing. Thank you so much for your time and allowing me this opportunity, Mr. Miller. I truly appreciate it.
Jen, can we ask a couple of questions?
Oh, sure. Yes.
I know, surprising.
I'm ready.
Did you want to? Yeah, go ahead.
You want me to go first? Okay. First of all, thank you. You are one of the unsung heroes of this district, for sure, and I've known you for a long time, and I know how passionate you are about what you do, and we're better for it. Quick question, when a student would walk into any of those locations, and let me just say thank you to Goodwill Industries, Akron-Symmet County Public Library, and the Green Fire Department for partnering with us on this, they don't need to present any proof or anything like that? They just need to go in and ask?
Nothing. They don't even need to state their name. All they say is, "Could I please have a Blessings bag?"
Okay, perfect.
And actually, running currently, right now, with the loss of SNAP benefits, even though those have returned, the community was so amazingly generous with the Supper Smiles Program, which are bags that provide dinner. Those will continue to be able to be also picked up at these sites, not Goodwill, but the Fire Department and the library. So, when they go in, they can also ask for a Supper Smiles bag, and they will get additional food.
Okay. Great. That's awesome. Thank you.
Can they opt in for the school distribution, or is it just, has it all moved to the distribution centers?
No. They, in fact, I will tell you, as of right now, I know of only two students that are picking up at the distribution center. Everybody else is still receiving in the school, and we're working on ways to make sure that when we're distributing in the school, we're as discreet as possible. I think there are many different techniques that we can look at and continue to improve on in districts so that we can ensure that no one can identify a Blessings child. That is our main goal.
Okay, so they can, so.
They can still, yes. They can receive it in school, as it's always been. any point, get a bag, and not have to receive that food while they are at school. We are hoping that this is going to make a difference. I will tell you, it's been a slow start. So we're hoping to get this word out more, and I can assure you that if this does not take off, and if it is not successful, we will continue to work diligently and as hard as we can to ensure that every student in Green gets what they need as far as food goes, regardless if it's in a school, in a distribution center, or through another idea that comes about through a volunteer or community member. This is our passion. We know that you are passionate about it, too. All of us will work together to ensure that every student has what they need to fully grow and succeed at what they're doing. Thank you so much for your time and allowing me this opportunity, Mr. Miller. I truly appreciate it.
Jen, can we ask a couple of questions?
Oh, sure. Yes.
I know, surprising.
I'm ready.
Did you want to?
You want me to go first? Okay. First of all, thank you. You are one of the unsung heroes of this district, for sure. And I've known you for a long time, and I know how passionate you are about what you do, and we're better for it. Quick question. When a student would walk into any of those locations, and let me just say thank you to Goodwill Industries, Akron Summit County Public Library, and the Green Fire Department for partnering with us on this, they don't need to present any proof or anything like that?
Nothing. They don't even need to state their name. All they say is, could I please have a Blessings bag?
Okay, perfect.
And actually, running currently, right now, with the loss of SNAP benefits, even though those have returned, the community was so amazingly generous with the Supper Smiles program, which are bags that provide dinner. Those will continue to be able to be also picked up at these sites, not Goodwill, but the fire department and the library. So when they go in, they can also ask for a Supper Smiles bag, and they will get additional food.
Okay. Great. That's awesome. Thank you.
Can they opt in for the school distribution? Or is it just, has it all moved to the distribution centers?
No. They, in fact, I will tell you, as of right now, I know of only two students that are picking up at the distribution center. Everybody else is still receiving in the school. And we're working on ways to make sure that when we're distributing in the school, we're as discreet as possible. I think there are many different techniques that we can look at and continue to improve on in districts so that we can ensure that no one can identify a Blessings child. That is our main goal.
Okay, so they can, so?
They can still, yes. They can receive it in school, as it's always been. This is just an additional resource.
Okay.
Especially for our middle school and our high school students, who are the ones who I think are the most hesitant to get Blessings bags. Our numbers are still relatively high down at the elementary and primary school, but obviously, we're not reaching a lot of families.
That's what I was going to ask. Where do you see the biggest fall off from?
Well, I believe it would probably start around the fourth or fifth grade, and then dramatically drop all the way through high school. So our high school students and our middle school students are my personal biggest concern. But I mean, we have younger ones, too, who are concerned about being identified.
Yeah. Okay. And we have it, we have the, on our website where they can click for the distribution center or to get that? Or do we have a link for that somewhere?
I don't know. I think.
Or that or the city or something?
Maybe had a video. I think Julie took care of everything, so she's a genius. Yeah.
Is it on the cities as well? I'm sure the city is supportive of that.
You know, I know that I did pass it along to the mayor. I'm not sure if they put it on their website or not, but I know he's very aware of the program.
Well, you can be very persuasive at times.
I can. Actually, I'm going there when I leave here tonight, so I will mention it to him.
So we'll see it on the website tomorrow.
Yeah, the more channels or more distribution areas possible.
Absolutely. And I did talk to Mrs. Brown tonight, and she mentioned talking to the counselors, especially at the middle and the high school, and, you know, them getting the message out to some students that they know about that are not possibly involved in the Blessings program yet. You know, just letting them know that there's other options that may have held them back before, that, you know, those barriers are no longer there.
Okay. All right, great.
Can I say just one more thing? I think I share the same concern you do about our middle school and high school students. And I think one of the things that we can do, and maybe this is a project for one of our different student groups, is really, I think we need to knock down some of those barriers. And I understand discretion, and I want students to have discretion. Their personal business is their personal business. But I think if students didn't feel maybe the need for the discretion as much, if we could talk more openly about food insecurity and understanding, you know, how, you know, we all get in different situations at times in our lives and getting, and I'm looking kind of out because the folks that are watching can't see, but there's a lot of students here tonight, the government classes here. So I'm just kind of looking out at you guys, not, you know, not picking anybody out of the crowd, but just saying that the more that you, as students, can make your peers feel comfortable with whatever their situation is around this, the more likely they may be to take advantage of what they need. And like I said, you know, we all get into different situations in our lives, and sometimes we just need help. And there's nothing to be ashamed about when it comes to that. And if we could, you know, continue to create, and I think we've created a environment of a lot of, you know, acceptance here at Green, but if we can continue to work on that, hopefully that will add to some of those numbers. So I just kind of, you know, challenge students to try to, you know, lift up their peers who may need that and make it okay, that they feel okay about it.
I think that's a great idea. And I know that in the past, especially with the food drives, I feel like the principals, the teachers have opened up dialogue on food insecurity. And I think it's another way that we could probably grow as a district and as a community, not just a food drive, but I would be happy at any point to come into any school, talk about food insecurity, and, you know, give tours, make it, which we have done in the middle school in the past. You know, the winners from each grade level get to come, and they actually pack Blessings bags. So they're part of the whole process. They're learning about food insecurity. They're seeing where the food comes and goes when they collect it, and they're seeing the end result also. So I agree with you. I think the more dialogue that we have and the more they learn about food insecurity, I think it does nothing but improve them as young adults and adults who are going to be in all of our communities one day. So thank you so much. Does anyone else have any other questions?
Just thank you for all that you do. It's just, your impact is immeasurable. And what, I mean, it was, when the schools were being built, you found a new location. When the Goodwill time is over in the, you know, bus garage, then we're going there. You've always been extremely innovative and looking for new ideas and solutions. And I walk away every time that I interact with you or interact with the Blessings group, it's just a wow moment every time because the, I just think of impact when I think of you and what you're doing. Because I believe you shared a story recently about you met, you met a young lady at a store. Maybe it was at Goodwill or something, or it was somewhere.
It was a grocery store.
Grocery store, and she said, I used to be a Blessings kid. Like, and, I mean, I don't think we, you probably, we cannot see it when we're providing food to a third or fourth grader where their future is going to go. But I feel confident that it's, the trajectory is changed when we're providing support for the community. So just thank you for all that you do. I just, I'm in awe of you and your efforts, day in and day out, and your team and the pantry princesses and the rest of your group that you have volunteering. It's just a very tremendous job that you do. So thank you.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate everything.
Moving along. Thank you, Jen. For the financial report, for the approval of the October 20th minutes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October meeting? Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
And thank you, Mrs. Finelli. Snowberger?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. For the financial report, the approval of the financial statement, payment of the bills from October 20 of '25, do I have a motion to approve that? Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chinaki. Mrs. Snowberger?
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the payment, the agreement with PSI Associates LLC to provide special needs nursing care to a student for the remainder of the '25-'26 school year. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
And thank you, Mrs. Finelli. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Snowberger?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the agreement with the Portage Therapy Services to provide occupational therapy services to students due to maternity leave. OTA services will be provided three days a week minimum, five days per week maximum, at seven and a half hours per day. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
And Mr. Chinaki. Questions or comments? Mrs. Snowberger?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education increase the hourly wage for substitute cooks to $11 an hour, effective November 17, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Finelli. Thank you. Questions or comments?
This is the new minimum wage in Ohio, starting January 1, 2026.
Okay.
Just right away.
And is, like, all our subs across the board have to have that? Is that what that is, or that is?
This was our only category that we weren't already paying at minimum wage or above. So we decided to move it now.
Okay.
To the $11, yeah.
Gotcha. You call the role, Mrs. Snowberger?
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Let's see. For the consent calendar, we're right there. Items under the consent calendar are considered routine and be enacted under one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes unless a board member requests the item be clarified or even removed from the consent calendar for separate action. I don't believe we have anything to add or take off. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Finelli.
Second.
And Mrs. Stoinoff. Questions or comments?
Just real quickly, wanted to recognize three of our teachers that at the conclusion of this school year will be retiring. Obviously, this time of year, we start to see individuals come forward, and, you know, they're going to be missed, and they have big shoes to fill. So I'll start with Mr. Ed Sibek. He has served the district for 18 years. He will be retiring at the end of the school year. Ian Murphy, who served the district for 33 years, teaching science. And Mike Murphy, who served the district for 36 years, teaching science. I just want to thank them for all of the work that they've done, all the impacted students along the way, and just an amazing career. And we wish them well in the next chapter. So I wanted to thank and acknowledge those three individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else? Mrs. Snowberger?
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Under the new business items, the superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the emergency repair with Summit Heating and Cooling for the replacement and upgrade of the existing Green High School boiler system, effective October 30, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
And thank you, Mrs. Finelli. Questions or comments?
Yeah, just real quickly, obviously, as we near the winter months, heat becomes that much more important. So one of the boilers came offline. We had one hanging by a thread that we were working on all the time, and I see Cindy smiling back there. Maybe not a thread, but, so this gives us the opportunity to make everything new in terms of the HVAC, and the high school will be lots of hot air in there come November, December. So we're in good shape there.
And this is multiple, is this the multiple, like, two or three boilers, right?
Four.
Okay.
Three, 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 three.
And we're doing all three of them. Okay. All right, awesome.
When's the, when does it plan to be wrapped up?
It should be, yeah, they're starting right now, so we're hoping, while we're in the 50s.
Keep them moving. Anything else? Mrs. Snowberger?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the purchase of four 2026 78 passenger conventional buses from Rush Bus Centers. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
And thank you, Mrs. Finelli. Questions or comments?
Yeah, so at an earlier meeting, we talked about going out to bid and the fact that a lot of times, school buses are not just sitting on lots prior to school years. So these became available. We have inspections every single year. We had multiple buses go offline because of the inspection. So in order to replace them, these four buses will add to two. We'll have a total of six substitute buses that we can use. And during the winter sports, and then as we head into the spring sports seasons, there's a lot of field trips. This makes things much more likely that we don't have to cancel anything, and that we have enough buses on the road that are in good, in good standing shape. So this is a continued goal for Mr. Clint Daniel to get our bus fleet modernized. I think, I know someone that'll hold him to it after this. I believe maybe two a year would be the way to get us up to speed.
Speaking of modernizing, are we looking at maybe doing electric in the future?
At this point, we're still monitoring. I know there's some grants out there. So if those grants come forward and they're attractive, that would definitely be. And I think we said at a earlier board meeting that with the new bus garage that's under construction, we have it wired and ready for electric should the day come where we need to update that facility. So we're definitely watching. I think at some point, it'll make sense down the road. But for these long distance trips and the field trips, the four will come in handy for that. But that's a good question. Thank you.
When do we expect to get delivery of those? By the?
End of the month.
Oh, okay. Awesome. All right, Mrs. Snowberger?
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the purchase of the three-year agreement for phone service for the high school elevator emergency line. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
And Mr. Chinaki. Questions or comments? I'd say I kind of chuckled a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully, we don't need to use this, but if there comes a day that you're stuck in the elevator, now you have a line to tell somebody.
Mrs. Snowberger?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
I probably shouldn't have chuckled at it because that karma could move it. I could call you to say I'm stuck in the elevator or something. But now you have a dial tone.
Busy signal.
A couple of change orders, looks like, that we have coming up. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve change order COR 074 for the middle school parking lot, undercuts located at the South Parking Lot and Bulldog Boulevard. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chinaki. And second, who is that?
Stoinoff.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, real quickly, we are still within our budget. Obviously, these types of things are planned for and to be expected. And I could pretend to try to explain what the undercuts are, but better than me, we have the experts from Hammond that can talk us through what led to this change order.
Finally. I've been wanting to ask this question for 18 months now, like, exactly what is an undercut? So.
This one off?
That one.
There we go. Okay, so as we were developing the South Parking Lot, in the areas where we had the existing middle school and existing intermediate school, we know we demoed those. An undercut is where, you know, we run into some bad soils. We'll call them unsuitable soils that don't meet compaction in order for us to have a stable sub base to build the parking lot on. So we ran into this in multiple instances, mainly under where the existing intermediate school was, and oddly enough, where the parking lot was, down to steez. So that's just what the undercuts are in the south area and a little bit on Bulldog Boulevard as we were just cutting and filling and treating this area so we could have the new parking lot and the new Bulldog Boulevard. So that's what the undercuts are. Correct, correct. Yeah, it's a lot of unforeseen, can't see underground. And what we do, we excavate out the bad soils and put in a better sub base, maybe some soils on site or even some stone to have that stable base. Yep.
It's much better than I could have done. Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Snowberger?
Do we have a motion?
Oh, yeah, I thought we already did.
Oh, I see it. Sorry.
Mr. Chinaki and Mrs. Stoinoff.
Sorry, I apologize. Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
I was looking at the next one.
Still with the change orders, the superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the change order COR 075 for the stadium parking lot, asphalt, mill, and fill. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
And a second, Mrs. Finelli. Thank you. Questions or comments?
This one originally, within the project, there was a portion on the property that was going to be replaced and modernized. And because we were within our budget, it gave us an opportunity to take care of the entire parking lot that obviously had a lot of wear and tear with the construction and building. So with this change order being approved, everything that you see on that lot will be brand new and will match everything that has gone into place and should last the district for a long, long time.
Very good. Mrs. Snowberger?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. The superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the quote from Anglin Equipment for bus lifts for the new bus garage. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
Mrs. Finelli. Questions or comments?
Just the fact that we're talking about bus lifts means the construction's going well with the bus garage. And the number four that came to my mind earlier is the number that matches this section, and there's four lifts that we're getting. So when our mechanics now work in the modern bays, they can actually go lift the buses up, look underneath it, where before there were pits that they had to go down into, which aren't as convenient. And I think the maintenance guys will be happier than anybody about these lifts.
That's awesome.
And this is kind of a normal thing to go out to bid on the equipment as the, as the process is going, right? I think I remember doing that with schools and stuff. Okay. Mrs. Snowberger?
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Chinaki? Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. The superintendent and treasurer recommended the board of education approve the request for the eighth grade middle school participating students to travel to Washington, D.C. from March eighteenth to the twentieth, 2026. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
And Mr. Cohen? Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take this one and the next one at the same time. These are the annual, well, the eighth grade is the annual field trip to Washington, D.C. Miss Stoinoff maybe wanting to chaperone yet again, but.
You're on your own, Mr. Elliott. I'm retired.
So that'll take place. Be there. There you go. Pat them in. So that would be the eighth grade to Washington, D.C. Obviously, we're hoping for great weather come March. And then because it's now a six, seven, and eight building, they wanted to have something for the kids to look forward to at the seventh grade, kind of like a capstone, something at the end of the year. So that will be the next item that the board will take into consideration. And it's preparing them for what it's going to be like to be overnight and go to D.C. at the eighth grade. So I think they're both great experiences for our kids.
Like the sixth grade would have a field trip of their own, you mean?
Seven. It'll be seventh and eighth. Sixth grade. Oh, that's right, camp.
Camp.
Camp point oh.
Okay, that's right.
So we all get a little something. Mrs. Snoburger.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. And on the heels of that, the superintendent and treasurer recommended the board of education approve the request for the Green Middle School seventh grade participating students to travel to Cleveland, Ohio on May eleventh, 2026.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chanacki.
Second.
And Mrs. Finelli? And I don't think we need any other explanation. This is not an overnight trip, right? This is just a day trip? Okay, gotcha. Mrs. Snoburger.
Mr. Chanacki?
My son would not be thrilled if I did, if I didn't vote, so I vote yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Oh, the first reading. Here we go.
This is to rescind the, the, those three, those two policies or those four policies that are listed.
Right. So we have a first reading of the, to rescind some board policy. The superintendent and treasurer recommended the board rescind the following Neola of board policies, the first reading of these. These policies have been condensed into replacement policies. You have the, we have them listed here on the agenda. I'm not going to go read through them all because they're listed on the, on the website, and they'll be able to be specified through the minutes as well. Is that right? Yes.
Yes. They'll be up on, both through the, both right on the website. When you go into the Board of Education section, you can search board policies there. Or you can actually also search it through, going through board docs, which is what our agendas are based on now. And you can look at it through there as well. So there's two places you can go.
All right. And do we need a vote for this?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion to approve the first reading of these policy changes?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion for that? Thank you, Doc. And Mr. Cohen?
Second.
And Mrs. Stoinoff? Uh, any additional comments?
Can I just ask one question? We're still getting used to reading this new agenda format. So right now, we're just, we're voting on the rescinding, and then we're about to make another motion for what's below here, the recommend to approve. Okay, sorry, I just couldn't see a letter or a number, so I wasn't sure. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, these, the first section is the rescind, rescinding of those. And then they'll be, right after that, they'll be the first reading of the new board policies.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Wonderful segue into the next portion of the meeting. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the board approve the first reading of the new.
She didn't call the vote. Hold on.
Oh, sorry?
Wait.
I asked a question, and then we never called the vote.
Slow down there, Roadrunner.
Come on, let's go.
Mr. Cohen?
Move it.
Yes.
We do know what we are doing. Promise you.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
New software. So we're getting used to it.
Now, we'll move along. The superintendent and treasurer recommended the board approve the first reading of the new and revised board policies. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Finelli. I don't believe there's any further discussion required. And Mrs. Snoburger?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Is that it? Almost.
All right. Yeah, I know. Public comments? Anyone in the public, in the audience that wants to speak this evening? You get extra credit if you speak or anything? No?
No.
Just extra signatures? All right. Then we'll move on to the board recognition. And I'm not going to call on Mrs. Finelli first.
Good.
So Mrs. Stoinoff, I'd like to start us off this evening.
Sure, I can do that. So I, I'd like to start by thanking the voters for reelecting me a couple Tuesdays ago, although it was kind of a little bit anticlimactic since there was really no competition. But I appreciate the people that did go out and, and vote. And I'd like to welcome Mr. Finelli to the board starting in January. Mrs. Finelli, you will be missed.
Thank you.
So much. We've had a lot of fun and a lot of good times and.
You'll be the only girl.
And a lot, I will be the only girl. This is true. And some times that have tried man's soul, but we, we got through it.
That's right, that's right.
You will be missed. And, and Nick, I'm looking forward to, to working with you. Let's see, I want to say congratulations to the football team on a hard-fought season and, you know, all the hard work that they put in. And it was, it was wonderful to see how far the season went. Couple of other little things. Veterans Day was celebrated at each of our buildings. This year, a veterans parade was hosted by G.P.S. and G.E.S. The district received several positive comments. The annual breakfast at G.M.S. and G.H.S. saw the most number of veterans in recent years. So that was nice to see so many veterans celebrated. A special segment on veterans was broadcasted, broadcast on News Channel Five, featuring two Medal of Honor recipients who spoke at G.H.S. along with four of our junior, junior R.O.T.C. cadets. A makeshift set was created in the J.R.O.T.C. classroom for the segment. So if you haven't seen that, you can, I'm sure, catch it out on Channel Five's website. A special thank you to our family support specialists and Blessings in a Backpack program for bringing the community together, you know, during a difficult time of food insecurity. There was an outpouring of support, as Jen mentioned, with donations of food and district personnel were able to mobilize efforts quickly. As we already talked about, food bags are available at no cost anytime at the fire station. They're open 24/7 and at Green Branch Library during their normal kind of business hours. D&amp;M Grill's food truck is once again sponsoring free Thanksgiving dinners on Thanksgiving Day. The truck will be at five locations throughout the city. Please refer to our district's and D&amp;M Grill's social media pages or call 330-896-7512 for reservations. There are, there's no cost, but reservations are helpful. G.H.S. alum Bella Rink is hosting her 10th Annual Love and Action Clothing Drive for Akron Snow Angels. Winter attire, including hats, mittens, and coats for men and women can be dropped off at Green High School if you would like to contribute. Our family support specialists are collecting gift cards to help out district families in need during the holiday season. Twenty-five-dollar cards to Walmart or Target may be dropped off at any building marked to the attention of F.S.S. Thank you in advance to all the volunteers who are going to participate in next week's Blessing in a Backpack Thanksgiving distribution. We have a record number of families signed up. There are, oops, sorry about that. There are numerous moving parts and pieces unlike years past with a pantry at Goodwill with distribution taking place at the community hall. So thank you to everyone who is involved in that. And with that being said, I think that is all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff. Mr. Chanacki?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Congratulations to Brooke Shockley and Silas Kirkpatrick, who signed their Athletic Letters of Intent recently. Brooke will be heading, will be attending Walsh University, participating in track and field, and Silas will play golf at Cedarville University. After a three-day training camp in Alabama, Green High School sophomore Zane Hamada, you would think this is the third, this is about the third or fourth time we reference this young man for his achievements. And I hope I did not butcher his last name. He is amazing, amazing, amazing. Has been selected to the USA Wheelchair Rugby Training Squad with the chance to earn a spot on the Paralympic Team USA. So I think that that is incredible. And we've watched that journey over the past couple of years, and it's, it's always great to see, to see that name, see what Zane is doing.
Have you said his name the same way each time? You can say it different three times. You're bound to hit it.
I'm bound to get it right, right. It was great having the Adaptive Sports Ohio come to the buildings during P.E. to promote the wheelchair basketball and provide everyone with an opportunity to play. The team has grown in popularity over the past couple of years, and we look forward to the upcoming season. The first home game for the team is December fourth at 6:30. Been fortunate a couple of times to catch some of their practices before my son goes in to one of the gyms to practice. And it's just, it's awe-inspiring. It's very, very, very cool to see. So happy to have that organization and that team on board. Coach Geis and our varsity football team had a terrific run late in the season, culminating an exciting win over Lake that launched us into the playoffs. Congratulations to all the football coaches and players on a great season. Started off one in five, finished super strong, won the first playoff game, and unfortunately lost a close one in the, the second round. But nothing, nothing to keep your head down on, on there. So congratulations. Fall sports teams had numerous federal league and postseason honors, so congratulations to the athletes and coaches that took part in that. And thank you to our local restaurants. You occasionally see on some of the social media, some of the sports teams being fed by some of the local businesses that donate time and resources and food to feed the players and coaches. So I think that that's always, again, giving back to the community, giving back to the student athletes. So thank you for that. That support is greatly appreciated. The Department of Ohio Edu, I'm sorry, the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Development, along with the State Eight Support Team, has released district PBIS awards for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Greenwood Gold, Green Primary Silver, Green Intermediate Silver, Green Middle School Silver, and Green High School Silver. Four buildings jumped up one level. So congratulations to Erica Bauer, Joya Mitchell, the PBIS leadership teams at each building for keeping be safe, be kind, be responsible at the forefront of the minds of students and administrators and teachers. Finally, the Starbucks PBIS staff voting continues to be a hit. Recipients to date include Hannah Givens at the primary school, Deanna Stahl at the elementary school, Vicky Rogers from Transportation, and Mandy Perrine from the middle school. Voting for an outstanding high school staff member runs through this week. Each member, again, this is something you could do on social media, each member receives a prepared gift box from Starbucks. So we thank them for their support. That's the Starbucks on Maslin Road. Thank them for their support and their continuation of PBIS efforts. And then finally, on a personal note, I would like to congratulate Mrs. Stoinoff and Mr. Campbell for their election victories. And excited to work with Nick and have you, have you join us in January. And to echo what Miss Stoinoff said, Sally, you will be greatly missed. I think I referenced a year or two ago, the first time that you and I met, our interaction, it was like, it's a core memory for me and just how kind and inviting you were. So I always, I always take that with me and always appreciate that. So thank you.
I'll miss you guys, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chanacki. You're not missing us for another six weeks, so we're not saying anything like that. You're not getting out any early. You're not getting out any early. It's not for good behavior if you don't qualify for that. Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Congratulations to the cast and crew of Footloose, the musical. The production wrapped up a three-day run with great crowds and reviews. Thank you to the directors, parent volunteers, and students. And I think we might actually have a student or two from the musical in here. I thought I recognized, yes. So congratulations on that and that massive accomplishment. So congratulations on that and that massive accomplishment. Sixth and seventh graders were treated to a special preview show before opening night, and it was great bringing an 80's movie classic to the stage. The G.H.S. marching band will depart for Disney World next Monday, November 24th, and return on Sunday, November 30th. The band will perform at Epcot on Wednesday and will enjoy Thanksgiving at Magic Kingdom. Good luck, students, and thank you to everyone who has supported the band's fundraising efforts for this awesome trip. Thirteen high school choir students were accepted to participate in the All-Day Kent State Honors Choir Festival event that took place on the Kent State campus. Our G.H.S. choir members spent the day working with Dr. Matthew Swope, the director of choral activities at Kent, and members of the Kent State Voice faculty. The day culminated at Cartwright Hall with a performance of the Honors Festival Choir. The G.H.S. 3D art class added a new feature to the Veterans Day celebration. The class has crafted ceramic clay roses that line the sidewalk to the entryway. Each flower was unique and created a special moment for the honored guests. The goal is to add to the bouquet every year so that the entire main office sidewalks are lined. Under the leadership of Mrs. Sherry Murray, Green Middle School Quarter One Art Students entered the annual Summit County Safety Poster Contest sponsored by the Summit County Prosecutor's Office. G.M.S. student entries competed against over 1,000 submissions from across Summit County in 12 Ways to Stay Safe categories. Congratulations to, honorable mention, Tonvi Patel and Presley Traykoff; third place, Sophia Oaks and Phoebe Smith; second place, Abriel Reinhardt and Parker Harold; and first place, David Moss and Danae Ritchie; and the grand prize winner, Katie Nagu, Caden, I can't turn off the last name, Naguian? It's Nguyen?
Nguyen.
What? Nguyen. Nguyen, thank you. Caden Nguyen. These winning entries will be included in the 2026 Summit County Safety Calendar. Congrats to Mr. Campbell, Mrs. Stoinoff, and our newest member, soon in January, to be sworn in, Mr. Finelli. You got big shoes to fill. Actually, your mom has little shoes, but they're actually big, because she has a huge, big footprint on this district, you know, from working so many years here and being on the board for so long, she is truly beloved, and I'm super excited that you will be jumping on this board. Also, Mr. Chenakki and I attended, and Mr. Miller and I, attended the CORE Grand Opening on Saturday. That was a great event and a really nice showcase to the cooperation that goes on between the school district and the city, and I'm looking forward to, of course, more collaboration in the future. And also, finally, welcome government students for coming here today. You know, I teach political science at the University of Akron, I study and follow government all the time. We just, this country just went through the longest shutdown in American history, I'm sure you talked about it in your government class, but I'm glad you're here because, you know, at the local level, government actually does work, and it works really well. And all of us here are like different parties, different ideologies, and, you know, we're all different people with different points of view, but we come together every month and, you know, in between that time, and we do what we think is best, hopefully for the district and for the community. And government really does work on the local level in a lot of local areas, not just on school board level, but also city council. So I'm glad, you know, it may not be the most interesting thing, we're not yelling at each other, we're not throwing anything at each other, but this is kind of government at work, and I'm glad you get to experience that, and I'm glad your government teachers make you come to at least one of these things. And if you ever want to come to any others, you know where to find us, so once a month. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mrs. Finelli?
All right. 412 sophomores, juniors, and seniors were recognized at the Green Schools Foundation Academy of Scholars. Students earn a 3.5 accumulated grade point average in the prior school year are eligible. Dr. Joe Fortunato, Green High School class of '85, was a featured alumni speaker. Dr. Fortunato is a professor at the Sidney Poitier New American Film School at Arizona State University. Highlights of his presentation included the need to pay attention to details and prepare to reinvent yourself several times. Dream big and succeed. Congratulations, students. Congratulations to Green High School students Mia Carries?
Karis.
Karis, sorry. And Ruiz Lopez for being selected to serve on Ohio Attorney General's Teen Ambassador Board. The students will serve for one year, providing an opportunity to engage in government and law and address issues facing young people in our state. Congratulations to the A.F.J.R.O.T.C. Raider Team, who won first place overall in the highly competitive McDowell Commando Fitness Competition in Erie, PA. The three green teams competed against 15 other teams from Ohio and Pennsylvania. The championship is the first ever for this competition. Very cool. That's it?
Very nice. Thank you, Mrs. Finelli. Just a couple of things real quick. You know, last week, it's, I don't know that people understand the gravity of having a Congressional Medal of Honor winner come speak and be kind of in your presence, and to have two of them in there, and you probably, you may never get the opportunity to hear one of them speak again, but hopefully you appreciated that. And if you just really take a minute to think about what these Medal of Honor recipients have done to earn that, one of the things that, when you listen to them, they never talk about what they, what they did. They talked about how they went and got this person and that person and stood in the way of that, and they didn't think about, oh, this would be cool, you know, this is a good thing to do. It's one of those where it, when you, when you think about the selfless sacrifice, those guys are shining, those people are shining examples of that. Most of them are probably awarded the medal, and they're not able to be there to receive it, and their actions are reported not by themselves, but by the others that either they're, that were part of the, the recipient of their bravery and courage, or somebody who heard the story and realized that this is something, this person is something special and needs to be recognized. And I hope that never, that never is overlooked on, on any of these guys, and as you age and everything else and do that, that you always think that, when you hear that, it's just like if you can say, man, back in high school, we actually had two of them up there talking, and it was an amazing, an amazing event. And it's just, I think that's, that's really, that's really what it's all about, is just, just giving it up for others. Speaking of that, you know, Thanksgiving is next week, and we all have big plans, and everybody, you know, a lot of families come in town, or you go somewhere and that kind of stuff, and it's, and it's amazing event. Blessings in a Backpack does something special, the food truck, we had it there, local restaurants do things. And I just want to say that, you know, as a community, I could not be any more proud of our green community. You know, when you talk to people and you hear what they have to say of, oh, gosh, I got to participate in this because, because somebody asked me. I really was always looking for something to do, and then somebody asked me if I could participate in it, and they jump in with both feet, and it's, and it's just, it's an amazing, it's an amazing feeling from you being able to help or just help out, whether it's, whether it's somebody that you hand something to, or say hello to, or just recognize that, you know, that, hey, I care about you, and there's, there's people out here that if you need something, all you have to do is ask. And I know it's difficult in these day and ages is to, is to, you don't want to just assume, you know, everybody's very, walks around it very, you know, carefully about, well, we don't want to offend anyone by thinking this or that, but, you know, if you have somebody in your neighborhood, or, you know, a neighbor you haven't seen for a while, or maybe somebody that's elderly in there, it's, it won't offend them if you stop by and knock on the door and just, you know, just say hello and wish them a happy Thanksgiving and, and move on with your day. And I tell you, I guarantee you, it'll, it will truly make their day, and they'll, and it'll be a day that they'll remember for a long time. So, you know, take a second and, and think about all the things that, that you, that we have the privilege of doing, and that's, that's probably one of the biggest things that, that we could pass along to, to others in the community. We don't have need for executive session this evening, and, pardon me, Mrs. Stoinoff, congratulations on your election.
Oh, thank you, right back at you.
Great to have you onboard.
Right back at you.
Finally, finally a Finelli that I can maybe get along with.
Watch.
But no, it's going to be great to have you onboard, and we'll talk about Sally next time. Our next board meeting is December 15th, and without that, do I have a motion to adjourn for this evening?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Finelli. Mrs. Snoburger?
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Chenakki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Coming.
If you need signatures...